Well, everyone, welcome. Thank you for coming out tonight. I know everyone has a very busy lifestyle. Everyone watching on TV, welcome. We hope, tonight, we can make a nice presentation and talk about what's going on at the Cottrell Farm. I think it's important that when we look to the future, we also look back. And on the front page of the, you know, on our presentation, you're gonna see project history. But I'd like this to take 30 seconds to go back prior to that. The farm was and still is zoned for high-density residential and commercial. It's part of our town center zone. As of right now, there's approximately $8 million of taxpayer money invested in the property. And that occurred from a previous administration who thought that high-density residential and commercial on that site was not in the best interest of the town. So between the county, the town, and a couple of other entities, invested the money into that property to buy what we call development rights. Now, the township is steward of the property. The county is the underlying owner of the property. They have allowed us now to make use of the property for open space. Tonight, we're here to, as I said, our professionals are here to talk about what we've come up with, what we think is a nice project. Goals and objectives, obviously, is to make this a jewel of the town, to make this a centerpiece where people want to come. And I'm gonna use the term "enjoy life." There's gonna be so many things going on that you're gonna see what we have proposed for this location. And I believe, you know, Old Bridge is gonna be a better place when this is done. And I believe that because, you know, the people in Old Bridge and the people that live close to this location, you know, you're gonna enjoy an improved quality of life. You're gonna see that that investment that we've made is gonna pay off. I believe your property values are gonna increase because you live next to this location. And I think it's gonna be attractive, like a magnet, for people to come and say, "Yeah, I wanna live here. I wanna live in this development because I can walk across the street and look what I have access to." So basically, you know, that's all I have to say as the mayor. I fully support the project, where we've been. Nicole will talk about that, the first concept plans, and where our professionals have brought us to. I think it's been a pretty interesting. I think we've nailed it now, when you look at what we have here. The protection of the history of that property, the protection of the buildings on that property. Channel 15. We're gonna tape it, yeah. So we're here tonight to hopefully hear positive, but we also want to hear negative. If anyone has anything negative to say. We haven't done anything yet on that property. We're gonna start removing some shrubberies, some dead trees, in order to protect the houses and the outbuildings, that nothing happens over this winter. Nicole will go over the phasing plan, how we're gonna phase this in. As Old Bridge, this is gonna be another investment, quite a large number of dollars. We're gonna have to go into this property to make it look like this. Again, we're gonna be asking the county, we're gonna be asking the state, we're gonna be asking the taxpayers of Old Bridge to pony up. But we're in a position now where we can bond for this project. And I don't believe it'll have an impact on your property taxes, your municipal property taxes. So I think we're okay township-wide for the money to do this. But it's gonna take, it's gonna be a tremendous effort to take the property from where it is now and bring it up to here where we want it to be. As anyone can see, there's a lot of work involved in this. So if anyone has any questions for me, I'll be available, not only on this issue, but if anybody else wants to talk about anything else, I'm available. So I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole and our professionals. And I ask everyone to listen, pay attention, and if you have questions, please ask them. What we wanna deal with is facts, no rumors. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Nicole Shapiro. I'm the Township Engineer and Director of Community Development. I'm actually joined today with the mayor, our consultants, French and Perlo Associates, Mike Pega is here. He's their head of the Landscape Architect Department. I'm here with Ruben Garrido. He's from EI Associates. He's in charge of the rehabilitation of the existing buildings there. And then our council members, Council President Mary Sohar is here, along with Councilwoman Anita Greenberg-Belly is also here with us in the audience. I know the mayor had gone over some of the history. And what I had done is I had just marked it out because for my own sake, I kinda wanted to know the chronological order of what has happened. I know there's been some talk in town, "Oh, that's county property. That's not the township. The county had bought that." So really, the property was acquired with Green Acres funding, with the county, and with Township Open Space Trust funds. 60% of the rights of the property are with the county. 40% is with the township. In 2015, Middlesex County had hired an LSRP. That's a licensed site remediation professional. And that was to take a look at the property, to take soil samples, and to see if there was any contamination. And I use that word lightly because this historically has been a farm. And if anybody knows about apple orchards, there's, you know, that historic pesticide that is associated with the chemicals that they treat the apple orchards with. The outcome, and I go through on my slide, I basically said there was a preliminary investigation, there was a remedial investigation, a remedial action report, and a response action outcome. And the underlying of that action is, it's ready to be used. The piece of the property that was sort of in question from the LSRP was the corner of Cottrell and 516. And that has been remediated through cultivating the soil over the last couple of years. That investigation took probably about two years. In 2016, Middlesex County retained an architect at the time to just take a look at the buildings and see, you know, what shape they're in, to give us a lead on what we could use the buildings for. In the summer of 2017, I'm sorry, in April of 2017, we entered into a management agreement with Middlesex County. That gives us rights to the property for security purposes, to develop the property, to maintain the property, and to push it forward, you know, as an act of park. In the summer of 2017, the mayor, the administration, had come to us and say, "Okay, well, now that we have management rights to this property, what can we do with it?" So before we got our consultants on board, the previous township planner, Katie Okina and myself, had come together and said, "Well, how can we come up with a concept so we can go out with a request for proposal from our professionals so they could put a dollar amount on, you know, preparing bids, plans, specifications, and taking our concept and pushing it forward?" You know, I don't design parks, but a landscape architect does. I don't, you know, rehabilitate buildings, but an architect does. And that's what we did. We got the professionals on board so that they could lead us in the right direction. I would wait till the end, 'cause there's a lot of good detail. So this is an aerial view, and this is what was the underlying view on that first slide. This is the existing park, and you could see the apple orchards towards the east, towards the right side of your screen. You could see that the canopies are pretty large. The apple orchards towards the center, you could see that the canopies, pretty much you could see that some of them are not there. Well, they were saplings that were planted in those areas, so they're coming back. Then you could see the buildings along County Route 516. You could see that cultivated area that runs parallel to Cottrell Road. So once the RFP went out and we had a consultant on board, what we did was we developed a steering committee. And that's probably about 22, 25 people in the room for the last steering committee meetings that we had. We had two of them, one in July and one in October. It consists of the mayor, the business administrator, the county. County Parks and Recreation Department is involved, Green Acres, because remember, we encumbered the property with Green Acres funding. So they have to approve everything that we do on-site. Our DPW Director, our Recreation Director, Police, Fire Marshal, Office of Emergency Management, our Conservation Office, the Planning Board, Historical Society, Grant Rider. So all of them were sort of steering the concept. So we went to that first meeting with our consultants' first blush. They took our original concept plan. They came with a proposal. They showed a concept plan at that first steering committee. So out of that steering committee, there's probably been about three iterations of that concept plan. From there, we took one of the latest concept plan. We met with Middlesex County, because remember, we're on two county roadways, so any entrances or exits off of the county roadway, they would have to have say in it. We also had conversations with the Old Bridge Municipal Utilities Authority for sanitary and water service to the property. We met with our forester, Gary Lavallo, you know, just to make sure that we were preserving the farm-like atmosphere, and then also that we were preserving as many trees on-site as we could. And we were basically in character with the nature of the farm. We compiled and addressed every comment in this concept plan that you see on the board that we're gonna show up on the screen later on, from the two steering committee meetings. So what you see is the latest and greatest tonight. We also investigated some funding opportunities with Middlesex County because I know the mayor is, the mayor had mentioned before, you know, we like to see if we can get funding elsewhere instead of, you know, instead of using township funds. We also had a lot of internal design meetings and conceptual design meetings with our consultants to kind of push forward whatever, whatever the steering committee had in mind, whatever, you know, suggestions they had. And so again, it's reflected there. These are the buildings on-site. These photos were actually taken from the original architectural assessment report that was done by the county. So if you look in the garage, storage building is in the upper left-hand corner, but that is what... That's actually what I like to call the pool cottage because it was, it was pretty close to the pool. Then there's, then there's the farmhouse building here, just a far-out shot. This is what we're calling the masonry building number one with the two garage openings. This is the corn crib over here. And the other day, our architect had opened up the door, and I was so impressed at how clean and pristine it was on the inside. And if anybody has ever gone into the farmhouse, it is beautiful on the inside. The architecture is gorgeous. The woodwork itself is beautiful. It was kept in such pristine condition. This is what we call the red barn over here. This is, this to the lower-left corner of the screen is the remnants of the old greenhouse. It's basically the foundation of it. I mean, the greenhouse is long gone, but what we're looking to do is preserve it in the exact same location and reappoint the foundation, and then rebuild that greenhouse eventually. This is just the rear corner of the farmhouse. You actually enter into the kitchen. And then the lower-right-hand corner of the screen is the masonry building number two. Our architect is gonna go into detail with each of the buildings and what we're gonna do with them. So now I'm gonna turn it over to the architect, and then soon after, we're gonna go over the concept plan.
My name is Ruben Garrido. I'm the architect with EI Associates. We were asked by the township to look at these buildings and see what condition they were in, review the old assessment report that was done by the county, and either agree or disagree, or say what we needed to be done, try to put together some costs that would be associated with renovating these buildings and upgrading them for some sort of use. So some of the uses that we were looking at for the farmhouse, for example, first of all, I just wanna say, the house will be maintained completely as-is. It will be restored, it will be repainted, moldings fixed, exterior trim repaired, windows reglazed as-is. The only changes, which I'll get to eventually, will be some minor changes to provide for barrier-free accessibility into the building and to provide accessible toilets in that building as well. On the ground floor of this building, where they're looking to use it for a small meeting hall, small lectures, the kitchen in the back will be used as a warming kitchen. There'll be no cooking done on-site. And upstairs, they would reuse those bedrooms for administrative offices. Everything, again, will be maintained inside as well. All the molding will be repainted, repaired as need be. The flooring's refinished. Old wallpaper that is actually a fire hazard will be removed, and everything will be repainted with proper colors. The barn, they're planning on using it for maybe a larger event space. There is an existing mezzanine on the second floor, which I'll get to later on, which can be used possibly for maybe small concerts or small music venues. It's a nice open space that can be used for small events. And then the stone garage, which is the older of the two garages, which has an old aggregate stone that was used, it's very unique actually, that will be restored. The inside is completely falling apart. The plaster's falling apart, so we'll repair that, replace that with a nice finish inside, restore all the exterior windows and doors, and that can be used as a small event space as well. That can also be served by that warming kitchen that's in the main house. The shop building, or also known as the CMU garage, that was the newer of the two garages with the two garage doors. That, they're thinking of using it as a medium-sized event space, because currently there's two larger rooms in that space. They can be, they'll be maintained as two larger rooms for small meetings for, I think you said the VA, and just different town groups can use these different rooms for their different meetings. They can be two separate rooms. We're also thinking of possibly taking down the center wall and having a folding partition so that this room can be used as one larger space for larger events. As you'll see later on in the plans, there's also a small unusable bathroom in one of the spaces that will be opened up a bit and created into a barrier-free toilet, so you also have an accessible toilet in that space as well. Then we have the pool cottage, rear garage, you know, something like, it probably was originally a summer kitchen that was used by the farm. It has a, it just has two rooms, and that is, where it's located, we were originally thinking maybe use that as a toilet facility for the entire site, but it just didn't work out well, and it didn't really make much sense. So instead, we're thinking of doing a prefabricated toilet room, toilet building somewhere else, which we'll discuss later on. Okay, so move on to the next picture. Sorry, I can't see. Okay, so here we have the farmhouse. There are a lot of notes which you won't be able to see, but pretty much all these notes are telling you is that we're going to restore it in its existing condition. The only thing that's gonna be different, if I can use the pointer here. The actual, we'll provide a new ramp, because the parking for the, this area, the barrier-free accessible parking will be on the side over here. We'll provide a new ramp that'll provide access into the building from this side here. We'll maintain the original entrance as-is. It's a very, it's a very nice entrance. It has a nice transom on the top, side lights. I forgot to mention, this building is most likely a Greek Revival building, probably around 1860, 1850. There are some indications that show it to be dated around that time by markings in the building, as well as the style of the house. It pretty much meets most of the criteria, at least the main part of the house, which is the main gable front here, as well as this small gable in the back. That's definitely that period. There were a bunch of additions that were put on it after the fact, matching some of the styles, but still you could tell they were definitely later, like this piece here, this piece in the back. So yeah, go back, going back to the plan, the front entrance will remain. We'll provide handicapped access from the side here. The kitchen will remain as-is. There's a small bathroom in the back, but it is however large enough that we can provide two accessible bathrooms with accessible toilets in the back as well for the space to use. Otherwise, everything will be maintained. The woodwork, the molding will be repainted, restored as needed. The one thing that will be changed as well, but it's a minor change, is the fireplaces. They will just be closed off with decorative panels or something, just to make them safe so that no one can have access to the fireplaces. Otherwise, they'll remain as-is. There are, you know, quite a few interesting details in the building. The fireplaces are quite unique. The chimneys are very large. I don't, personally, don't think they're from this period. I think they're actually probably a little younger, because they're more, you know, Queen Anne Tudor style, because they're very large and very ornate. But they'll, they'll all be maintained. So let's move on to the next. On the second floor, everything will be maintained as-is. They'll be used as offices. The only change that we're proposing upstairs is there's one large bathroom that's located in the middle. It'll be split into two separate bathrooms to provide more toilets for the second floor, because this will be used as office spaces. Otherwise, nothing will be changed. Here we have a floor plan of the barn. Obviously, this doesn't show you much how nice it is on the inside, but there's a lot of old hewn timber. Most of it is all hewn timber that's inside the garage, I'm sorry, inside the barn. There's a mezzanine level in this area here with the stair going up. Otherwise, this is all open. These are just trusses that go across to help support it. This upper level can be used, this whole building can be used as an event space, and the upper level can be used for, you know, events. Maybe they could have a little band playing music up here or something, and then there could be an event going on downstairs. Again, here, the wood will all remain as-is. It'll be cleaned, sealed to maintain the wood, and then the outside of the building will be repainted. The windows will be reglazed, and the door repaired as well. Originally, there was a second door in the back, which at some point was removed. You know, there's been thoughts of possibly removing them as well, or providing those doors as they used to be, just to give a nice, you know, for an event where you could have open access to both sides. But that's just a thought. Here we have the stone garage. The stone garage is the older of the two garages. This is, as I mentioned before, this has the aggregate stone that was used to create this. It has a nice mansard roof, which needs some repair. The windows on the perimeter, they definitely need repair. They can be reglazed and repainted and maintained. The doors are very, very beautiful doors. They also need a little bit of restoration work, which will be done. The inside, unfortunately, the plaster is in extremely bad shape. It's falling apart. It has not been tested yet, but it's, there's a possibility they might have asbestos, so it's, it's gonna be removed either way. But it will be then refinished with a gypsum finish to provide the same look as the inside has now. There are some visible wood beams as well. They'll be also cleaned and sanded and finished to maintain them as well. Again, this will be used for small events. This will not be used for all seasons. This will just be used for, I think, the spring through, spring through the fall. This is the larger of the two garages. As I mentioned before, it has two larger rooms right now. There is a small wooden room that's here as well, built with wood walls. It's not even full height. That will be removed to provide two nice-sized meeting spaces. There's, the existing garage doors, they're in very bad shape, so they'll be removed, but they'll be provided with new doors which will be, which will match the style that we're looking for, as well as, they'll be insulated as well, because these buildings will be heated for year-round use, so that the meetings can take place here all year. As I mentioned before, there's currently a small bathroom, which is really only about this big right there now, but there's a small vestibule that leads to it. It's a step up, though. So that wall will be removed. This whole place, this whole space will be made into one unisex barrier-free bathroom. We'll provide a small little ramp that will lead up to there so that this facility has its own bathroom that can be used. As an option, that wall can be removed. We're thinking of removing it as well, providing some bracing for that wall because it is a large span. And then putting a folding partition here that will still maintain the two spaces if you want to have two small meeting spaces. Otherwise, we can open it up and you can have one larger space. And in the summer, the garage doors can be opened up, and it can be all, be used altogether with the plaza that's out front. Just to give you an idea of the orientation, if you look over here, that larger CMU garage is right there. The stone garage is here. The main house is here, and the barn is here. So they kind of create this nice space in between them all, with a nice plaza there, where you can have some nice events in the summer, which can then make use of all the spaces at the same time, or just individual spaces separately. Again, here's a picture of what the garage, that garage that we just saw looks like now. These are the windows that I mentioned, which we can remove these windows and provide two separate entrance doors, period, period doors, that can provide access separately into each of these two spaces. And then these doors will be replaced to provide insulated roll-up doors. They will still be roll-up doors so that this can be opened up into the, into this nice plaza when it's created. This is just a quick, you know, idea. This is, this was thrown together quickly, just to give you an idea. We'll have some nice doors, and then newer garage doors as well. Finally, we have the, what's called the pool cottage, which is a really, it's a very small building. Right here, there was probably, it was, there's a kitchen, which is possibly used as an old summer kitchen, or maybe a kitchen for the farmhands to use. It's a step up from this level here, which is a very old unfinished space, which was probably just used as a garage or for the pool equipment. The thought is to maintain the building, restore the exterior, and make, get rid of the kitchen, and use this as a maintenance building for the facility, because the facility will need a place to store maintenance equipment, the vehicles, small vehicles, I would imagine, as well as a place, they would provide maybe a slop sink to clean the tools and the like. So this will be used for maintenance for the facility. And that's it.
My name is Mike Pega. I work with French and Perlo. I'm a landscape architect. I've been doing this for the past 20 years. I've worked on multiple parks and playgrounds and facilities of this nature. So I want to take you on to the next adventure in Old Bridge here. As we all know, this is the facility that we're looking at, and what we're, the farm. And what we're trying to do is keep the theme of the farm still going. To orientate you with this area, this is Cottrell Road, and this is Old Bridge, Madawan Road. And to start you off, the facility is, to come into the facility, we're looking at a parking area off of Cottrell Road. We call this Access B. And you'll come into this, this parking area over here, where we would have about 105 parking spaces. The parking lot itself will take into consideration the farm area. What we would like to do is add a lot of vegetation around it. We would like to put shade trees along the outskirts of it and provide a boulevard-type effect where we could do a perennial landscaping. In addition, we would do some what they call rain gardens or swales, so we have non-point to bring it down into a detention basin. Access, Access Area B is over along the front of, north of Old Bridge, Madawan Road. And what we did there was we brought in a roundabout. We wanted to make it a very formal entrance. And what we would allow people to do is come into this facility, and then they would be able to go around the roundabout and either go into the parking area on this, on the west side, or go into a second parking lot. The reason we broke it up was the facility that we were looking at was to give multiple uses here. At one point, when people are using the farmhouses and are, let's say, having some type of community event, there are other locations where people could use that don't have to participate, such as the walking trails and the splash park area. So this is the reason that we broke up these couple areas into this facility. Now, leading back into the Old Bridge... There is approximately 55.
105.
105. Now, going back to the parking area, leading off of the parking area, we have an area to the north of it, which could be used for a farmer's market, or to provide areas for additional parking if there's a smaller or larger event going on. To the east of that, we were designating an area for, for a community garden, so that senior citizens or community groups can come over in here, and they would be able to attend to that location. As you can see, there's a main walkway that we have throughout the facility. It's about 10 foot wide. It will allow you to come through the botanical garden, which could be used as a memorial garden. We also are showing a... We also are showing a designation of bricks, which could also be, basically, they could be etched and it could be donated and turned into a memorial-type walkway. There's the existing structure there that was a kitchenette, which would be turned into the storage right in here. And as we continue into the center of the farm, giving it distance from the areas, the perimeter, is a small little splash pad for kids. It would have like a water splash pad and it would have benches and places for people to sit down and watch their children. Also, there's a small park, playground area for the kids. And, and that's one of the reasons that we did break up the parking areas. As you can see, if you were parking all the way over here and we all, if we had children, I have children, it's a very hard thing to get the kids to go all the way back and forth. So we broke it up so that people could park in this area and that will allow them to get to the park or to playground pretty quickly. We also were talking about putting a prefab bathroom out there, because again, we don't, as parents, you don't want to have to run all the way back to the bathrooms. So this little structure would be a prefab bathroom that people would be able to use. As we go further into the, into the park, you will come into this area. We call this the Great Lawn. This would be allowed, able to be seen from multiple distant areas across the street. It'll bring people in there, they can see what's going on. We want to make this pretty formal for these people. It'll be a nice lawn area that Old Bridge would cut. We provide a little pavilion at the very end, where they could have a band or a theater or Shakespeare in the Park type scenario in this little pavilion area. We also provide a little seating area with brick pavers or something of that nature, so that if, if it's a small event, they can keep it on to that area. And then at the very end, at the terminus, we would put in a pavilion, where people could have a picnic or where they could have a birthday party. Now, all this going on, on the outskirts, there was the existing apple orchard. We still are keeping the apple orchard in this area. And throughout the apple orchard, what we would like to do is provide pathways. And there, the trails would be marked and they would have different lengths and one is an eighth of an, eighth of a mile, the other one's a half a mile. Along the frontage, we want to continue with the Old Bridge theme of the walkway and the bike path. So we broke it up into the two areas and we kept it meandering to give that park feel to it. And it would go all the way around and up along Cotrell. Over in this area, what we were doing is we have the connection in the woods, so that the residents back here can connect into the park without having to go all the way around. And it also gives an opportunity, if there's an emergency or if maintenance vehicle has to come through, this trail would be used for that, that purpose. Well, I mean, it, it's an access point.
No, no, it's, it's a walking path. It's a little bit wider than a walking path.
Yeah, it's about 10 feet wide. Yes, there would be access. Now, moving to the front of the area, into this facility, at this area, we would turn into the buildings. We would work with the architect on coming up with a plan for that area, so that we will have a nice little plaza area that goes with the, the farm, the farm theme. As I said before, the landscaping, we would be placing landscaping native to the area. We believe in putting a lot of native plants. We would like to do perennials and have some flowering plants into this facility and really make it a beautiful area. Well, this is gonna be mainly centralized. Because you have in this area. This side? Yeah, the other right. Okay. Well, currently, the idea is to keep the, the farm theme to it with the apple trees and stuff of that nature. We're not really, right now, we're keeping the same fence. Well, we can, we can talk about that. But for the time being, we're, we're gonna be having the, the apple trees and the walkways over there and there would be a connection point. Can I go through the presentation and then we can answer any of these questions at the end? From a further standpoint, like we were saying, so the majority of this design is we have our parking lot area, so that people can come and utilize this facility. We have playgrounds, we have some, a playground, a splash park area. We'll have areas for a little concerts and people to enjoy during the wintertime and summertime. We'll have walkways for active and passive activities. Along the pathways, we'll also put a little bit of jogging trails and put some exercise areas, so that people could do that. And we'll, we'll maintain the theme of the, of the farm. We're not trying to take away the farm. We're trying to maintain the theme, but still give activities to the, the residents in the community. To give you an idea of some of the concepts that we were looking at. For the bathroom area, we'd do a nice rustic-looking facility. Probably have about three, three stalls on each side for men and women. The pavilion would pick up that same concept of that rustic look to it. And then the playground, to keep that theme, we would be looking into a farm-type scenario. With this, it gives us opportunity to put signage around there. We would put signage up near the front, where people could be walking around, they can understand what this farm, Cotrell Farm was about. They could put signage along the walkways, which would give a little flair to it to understand where they are and what's going on. Historic signs that would describe the Cotrell Farm and some interesting facts about it. And as I said before, the brick pavers, which people could donate and get their etched and put a memorial or, or something of that nature.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about the next steps after, after today. The thought today is to compile any of your questions. I asked that when we're done with the presentation, if everybody can come up to the mic and then we can get everybody's questions on record, because we'd like to compile them and address them individually. We're gonna pursue additional funding, as we discussed in the beginning. And then, this is, this is the end goal. This is not gonna happen all in one shot. This is several years, you know, starting with next year, as our, as our Phase One. So what we're gonna do is, once we compile your comments, come up with a cost estimate for what the total project would be. Once we do that, then we're gonna come up with what can we afford in Phase One and what can we start constructing in 2019? It could be as far as the buildings, maybe just rehabbing the farmhouse in 2019 and doing some site work. But certainly, not everything can happen at one time. Once we determine the Phase One scope, we'll go to public bid and then we'll award. We, we would anticipate some sort of construction beginning in spring, early summer of 2019. What I have on here is just, you know, if, if somebody doesn't feel, if feel comfortable coming up to the microphone tonight and, and asking a question, you're more than welcome to email me any questions. If you think of questions tonight and you think of questions later on, feel free to email me. I'm asking that if any questions can come to me before or, or on November 9th, to give us a two-week period to sort of gather all the questions and, and respond to them and then, you know, sort of direct our consultants to push forward. Also, if you visit our website, www-oldbridge.com/projects, Steering Committee Number One Presentation, and then the minutes from those meetings. Steering Committee Two Presentation, the minutes from those meetings. And as soon as we finish from tonight, the presentation from tonight will be on, on Monday, will be posted on that website. And as soon as we compile all the questions and we put them in minutes forms, our minutes from tonight will be on that website. So anything you want to know about the farm will continually be updated on that website. So it's www-oldbridge.com/projects. So if you'd want to get a closer look at that conceptual plan, you could actually click on the, the link on that project page and you could zoom in and out to see exact details and you could see exactly what the callouts are, what's proposed on there. I know I heard about the fence. It, it is in our, in our scope to actually put an entire perimeter fence around. We're looking to do that early on. We're, we're not sure if we're gonna do a split rail with the wire mesh, or if we're gonna do a chain link fence, but that's, chain link? That's, is, no chain link, right. So, so, so tonight, we're gonna take all the comments and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna get back to everybody on the comments, but I ask, if you have any questions, please feel free to come up to the mic. Jess, is it, is it on, Jess?
Real tall, sorry. So I guess my question is safety and traffic study. And since there's a hill on Cotrell and you have kids riding their bikes, going from the ice skating rink to the other side, that will, there'll be a magnet there now. And just in general, when you drive up that hill, and I live right on Portsmouth, I make a turn into Old Bridge Plaza, it could be kind of rough. So I'd like to know what the traffic study is. I think we all would. I'm in favor of this, I think it's great. But I just need to know safety. And in part, is, will there be a light, a flashing light, or something blinking on the ground? Have you thought that far? I'm sure you have.
So as far as the traffic study, there was not one done for the, for the park itself. We use historical data from existing parks and towns and, and what sort of like the demand is for traffic generators on there. As far as, you know, the bicycle riders, because it's town-centered district, I'm not sure if anybody's noticed the recent sidewalk that was constructed along, across the street from the farm, along the municipal complex. Right, so that is, that's actually, that's actually part of town-centered district standard. That's actually a pedestrian sidewalk, but the second phase of that sidewalk is a bike path. On, on this one, if you take a closer look, you'll see that the sidewalk runs up the Cotrell Farm on Cotrell roadside, and then there's a dual bike path pedestrian to sort of, you know, have people gain access that way. If they were to cross, the cross would be at the light at Cotrell, because there's a pedestrian signal head there. The cross wouldn't be mid-block. So if you were, you know, coming from like, let's say, Society Hill, you would cross at the light. If you were coming from the arena, you would have to cross then at the light again.
Those traffic studies that were, you've used as models, did they have an ice skating rink across the street, a town hall and a library?
No.
No further questions?
Can you just state your name for the record, so I could have?
Deborah Briggs, B R I G G S, Portsmouth.
Okay, I'll, I'll go next. Hi, I'm Robert Agolia. I've been living in the neighborhood for the last 15 years at 19 Portsmouth. I have a couple concerns. I have two cousins, actually, live around the block from one on, on Bradford. I have another cousin owns also, owns a house on Killington. So we have, our whole family basically lives in the neighborhood. We have young children, so we're concerned, and this is live, they've been watching this right now, so it is live now. So they're watching it. Their concern is about people meandering out of the park into the neighborhood. I walk my dog frequently throughout the neighborhood. I walk through this area sometimes to get to Cotrell, like cut through the roads there. And sometimes I don't find such nice things back there. We found homeless people staying back there. We found a lot of drug use going back down there. Several times, I've called the police in to have them come, clean up that area. And so it's a concern with our children back there. Also, the playground behind us, hasn't happened in a few years, but there was a lot of drug traffic back there as well. There was major things going on back there. I'm a school teacher, so I'm, my concern is for children, number one. And so we're just concerned, you know, if this is gonna be access in the back there, you know, it's a major concern of ours. Have you thought about that?
When, when we talk about access, if we were to put a perimeter fence around and have a gated, a gate with a knox box only for emergency use at that Bradford entrance, would that?
Prevent pedestrian walking through as well?
Pedestrians will not be able, but that would also mean that anybody in Old Bridge Muse would have to get into their car and then drive over to Cotrell Farms if they wanted to use it.
Option.
Is that something that the, that the public would be interested in? I'm sorry, who said no? There, there's actually gonna be employees dedicated for the maintenance and for the security of the park and on-premises.
Hope so, that's why I'm making sure. I just want them to be aware of that.
We could, we could actually, there's, there's two locations on the main driveway entrance at the grand entrance on County Route 516, where there's just a swing gate, so that it doesn't allow people to enter and park there overnight. And then that, there's another gate that's proposed at the B entrance on Cotrell. We, we could always, I mean, the intention of the park, before we have lights, is dawn to dusk. And it's never gonna be beyond that. There's gonna, the pathways will be lit for, you know, once, once it becomes, you know, winter and, and, you know, the, you know, people want to, you know, take a nightly stroll. But the intention is to, to have security on site. Part of our management agreement with Middlesex County is we're responsible for the security on site. We don't take that lightly. Now, you know, as I sometimes walk the complex during lunchtime, I see cars coming in and out of there and I'm like wondering, what are they, what are they doing back there? But now, if it's an active park, we're not gonna invest and just leave it. We're gonna invest, we're gonna monitor, we're gonna maintain, and we're gonna improve it continually. So, you know, it's not like we're gonna, you know, improve it and walk away. Well, funny you say that, we're actually doing a municipal complex security system, where we took a look at some of our bigger parks as well, to have, you know, compute, security computer, security cameras at those locations too. One of, one of the locations is this park, however, it would not be implemented as quickly as the other ones, because it's not built yet. Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, can I have your, your name? Bruce. I'm sorry. The Cotrell, the parking lot. I think. Well, I think, your first question. I think the intention with the parking lot on that side is, if we were ever to have Old Bridge Day, not at the municipal complex, if we were to have it there, that would be where like the food vendors would be, and then they would give them an opportunity to kind of, you know, not ruin, like, let's say, the lawn area, but they would be able to park then on that, that surface. And then, if there was ever an event at the, you know, the, the Red Barn or the farmhouse or, you know, the meeting room, people would park there. So we needed two spaces. There was another feature that was along the. There was another feature that was along the...
516, you have no space, open space outside the great lawn. That's geared for extra parking.
Well, it's extra parking, or it's, not future parking, it was for the farmer's market. If a farmer, farmer's market wanted to like establish there, they would use that green area, and then the patrons would park in the parking lot. But that's not, that's not township, like up by a... Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 this is, this is the, this is the farmer's market area here, and then this is the community gardens.
Okay, I'm talking about the parking lot on that side could be used instead of most of the parking lot on the trail.
Okay, I think the consideration here is because when the licensed site remediation professional was doing his reporter's initial investigation, when they had to cultivate the soil, a lot of what, what they're doing is to secure that, you know, the contaminants don't get out, if you cap it with pavement, then that's a good solution to that area, and that's why it was suggested. It was actually suggested by the county to put the parking area in that location. Now, if you, if you take a look at the site and the grading wise, everything drains to sort of this area. So it was a nice approach to put the parking in this area and have it drain to this corner, because the county has an inlet right on County Route 516 and Cotrell, and then that drainage system could eventually drain into that closed system on that roadway. The 55, there's a couple of spaces by the farmhouse that are ADA accessible, and then there's a couple of, there's a, the 55 is in the area by the playground and the splash pad and the prefabricated restroom building, sort of runs parallel across the, across the path from that. Is anybody's? Sir, I'm trying to answer your question. If there, if there's anybody that remembers, there was an application in front of our planning board recently for a development across the street. It was called the 516 Development. It's actually at the southeast corner of the intersection of Cotrell and 516. As part of that application, they have to put a dedicated left turn into their site. What we did was we relocated our driveway to be directly across from theirs. Now, when we, when we, when they were in front of our planning board, we had requested that they widen the road enough so that they could have a dedicated left turn lane. The gore area in the center of County Route 516 is not wide enough to accommodate a dedicated left turn. They would have to widen to 42 feet. That was not only a recommendation by me, but it was a recommendation by the county engineer. So as a requirement of the county, they have to widen to 42 feet along the entire frontage. I asked them to do an entire, entire frontage of Cotrell Farm. So not only do we have the widening of the, it's all going to occur on the westbound approach to the intersection of 516 and Cotrell, but it will give them a dedicated left into their property, and then a dedicated left into the Cotrell Farm property. Now, when you come out of this access point, the main entrance, and you want to go left, you cannot do that on 516. You will only be directed through a channelized lane with an island to make a right turn only. If you want to make a left on 516, you must, and you're on, let's say, the eastern side of the property, you go around the roundabout, you travel through the parking lot, you exit on Cotrell, and then you go straight to the light to make a left at that intersection.
Hi, my name is Steve Colavito. I'm president of Olebridge Muse, which, this is, everything backs up to us. I think, you know, obviously, this is a great plan, I think it'd be great for the town, but there are some traffic concerns. You mentioned that a traffic study was not done. And the traffic studies that were done are not similar for county parks. I don't think there's much traffic as compared to what this is.
I took parks like Geik Park, I took Menino Park with YMCA and that, and all the sports that goes on there. Those are the parks that we took into consideration, the larger ones.
So I think, like, right here, I think the gentleman over here was talking about this lane. Is there going to be a right-hand turning lane that goes up, all the way up, so people can make a right turn?
Right, there's not a dedicated right, but it is going to be widened. So they would be able to turn in, in a wider spot. Now, the pavement with there is wide enough for another car to get by them. But yes, it would be. It will actually be widened the entire length of the frontage of Cotrell Farm.
So there will be room for a car to make a right turn when there's cars that are sitting, that are going straight?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, now over here, on this corner,
Yes.
we already know that there was a barrier or a guardrail that was taken out, and I think the gentleman here mentioned it. There's, you know, the town does some, you know, there's, they got potholes, and then we put some academy in there. Because, when there's traffic, when there's a football game, there's a lot of traffic that backs up coming up Cotrell.
Yes.
To make a right.
Yep.
There's traffic, not only football games, yes, the gentleman's right, but there's also traffic, rush hour traffic. So, is there a plan to make a right-hand turning lane up here to alleviate this? Because what I see is people trying to get out of here, trying to make a left turn, unless you have traffic management, that's considered like, if you have traffic specials perhaps, that's going to have to be considered, because people trying to get out of here are going to be sitting, and then people making left-hand turns, it's going to be very challenging, and then this is going to back up.
Right.
Here, and then people in our neighborhood back here are trying to go out to get milk, you know, they're going to be walking through the park, because they're not going to be able to get there with a car.
So, this intersection is actually county-operated. Of the four legs, three are operated by the county. So, the potholes that were filled, was it you, Kyle? No, it was the county, right? It's almost turned into a de facto right lane.
It has.
There's, there's intersection improvements that they had proposed. I have to see where they are in the pipeline on those proposed improvements, but I have to say, I know that they're having discussions. They haven't given approval to this development across the way. And as part of their development, they have to do improvements at this intersection. So I think they might be holding off to wait to see what improvements that commercial development would do prior to them getting out there. But I can certainly get back to you via email to the group, whoever had provided me an email, on, on what the intersection improvements look like for that intersection.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I think if there's, you know, some traffic alleviation there by way of a lane, and since they're on the steering committee, hopefully they'll
Yes.
take this concern seriously.
Actually, we actually went to them and met at their office with the county engineer, one of their senior engineers, their planning board, their planning department, their Parks and Rec department. So, they're, they're on board with, with, you know, making this, you know, this is, this is not only our jewel, but it's also, you know, their jewel as well. So, they're looking to, they support us, basically. So, I can get back to you on what improvements they have. And incidentally, part of that conversation was that, you know, I could, I could then stripe this as a dedicated left turn into this entrance as well.
Right, because there's a...
So it's going to be pulled back a little bit, that gore area.
Is there going to be a sidewalk that travels the length here, or is the sidewalk going to stop there?
It's going to stop there, because this green area here is wetlands. And then, if you see, there's a dotted line around it, that's the buffer area. So, you know, once we start getting into that area, it would take almost like an act of Congress to get through DEP regulation to extend the sidewalk. So at this point, we just stopped it at, at the, at the, at actually the old farm road is where it stops.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, okay. How about the lighting in here? You mentioned lighting along the walkways. Now, for our residents or our members back here, I mean, it could be, you know, it could be nightlights all night, particularly in the winter.
They will, they will shut off, they will shut off. I mean, I'm not sure what the part, we haven't gotten to the operations of the park yet. But they're, you know, similar to what you see on 516, that colonial style, I'm sorry, 516, and on Cotrell, the recently put up there. And they're LED, and they're, and they're pretty much low wattage, and they will be set on a sensor to shut off. I'm sorry, what did you? No, 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 no. Do you know the dimensions? Do you remember? 500 feet.
Do you know, like, based on other parks, like Shakespeare in the Park type of thing, and, you know, other types of events, like, how many people do you forecast going in there? So for instance, you have space for 160 cars. Do you see it being more like 300 cars, 200 cars?
You know, down the road eventually, and we have to take a look at Green Acres rules, if there was, you know, let's say we wanted to open this up to like residents, if they wanted to have a graduation party, or a bar mitzvah, communion, or something, and they wanted to have some, use this as some sort of event space and rent it out, you know, that, those are, those are pretty much far and few between. It's, you know, it's like Olebridge Day. It's not an everyday occurrence.
I would assume they could use the, like, the ice skating park and, ice skating parking area, perhaps, and walk over.
You never want them to cross the street, though. You don't want them to, you know, because then you have, with Olebridge Day, we have a lot of police presence to get them from, you know, the Carl Sandburg School over to our side of the street. And, you know, there's, there's always issues with having them cross. Right, it was, it's called 516. Originally, this site was supposed to be developed as a, as a shopping center, a ways back, and it was approved for a shopping center. But then, the wetlands regulations came into effect. So, it's, it still mimics the town center feel. It's on a very much smaller scale than the commercial development across the street that Ponce Vecchio is in. A smaller scale, half the size, but, but similar. Well, you could use it as the architects. Yeah, so, our architect is actually, the, our landscape architect is actually the same landscape architect as Essex County, the Turtleback Zoo, and, you know, the boathouse up in Essex County, and, you know, if anybody's familiar with that area, which is a very big money generator. But once you have Green Acres funding, everything that you collect has to go back into the park. So, you know, that's why we were saying, you know, if eventually we were to use this, it could almost self-sustain, all the maintenance, all the repairs, all the upgrades, could sort of be self-sustained. Yep, the catering could be brought up, but you can't cook in the kitchen, you could only warm. Because then it's a different class that we would have to upgrade that building to. So for example, their, their existing kitchen was probably done, Ruben, would you say 2000-ish? I don't know, they have the same oven I have, and it's very old. But, you know, it's, it's, it's actually pretty new cabinets, the countertops are like Corian. You know, it's not, it's definitely not from the 1800s. So it's, it's actually good, we were, we were proposing to do very minimal changes in there, other than upgrade the countertop, maybe the sink, and reface the cabinets. But basically, and, and maybe the oven, the wall oven is very old. But other than that, everything has actually been in pristine condition, you know, to, to use as a warming. Once you start changing out things, then you start having to upgrade to a commercial level, it's very expensive. Yeah. Well, we entered, and that's a good question for the mayor, he just stepped out. Well, we, we purchased the house in 2011. Mr. John Hauser was farming it up until the end of 2017. So I would have to say, maybe the end of 2017. We don't want to.
But you can, that's the whole idea.
You can, but, but the intent is to keep the apple orchards. So the intention is no. No, we only put a hundred-foot buffer at the suggestion of our conservation officer because of the pesticides when you're spraying. You want to keep that away from any of the pedestrians that are walking in the parking lot. There's always a potential, but the, the administration, the mayor, this is it. Same, same kind of forum, you know. Everything is posted online, because we're trying to be as open as possible. I don't want anybody to be surprised. This is, you know, the same presentation I'm giving here, I'm going to give to council, probably in our November meeting. Same presentation that I give here, I'm going to give to our planning board as a courtesy, look see. We actually have Kate DeLuca, who's on our planning board, she's a member of our steering committee. We also have two other members of our steering committee, and they alternate, and our planning board chair is on that, on the steering committee as well. And they, they take turns, they alternate on the meetings. So we have representation, basically. Yes. It would be a dedicated left turn in. I want you to... You're making, I'm sorry, where are you, on Cotrell? Yep.
Is there going to be a dedicated turning lane here?
No, no, it's a free movement. It will not, it's a free movement, it will not back up. People will have...
The reason I say that is because when this light, it's a green arrow, you know, there's a lot of people trying to get through here, and they do hit the gas, it will be coming through, and then slowing down.
Right, right. Right, I mean, I think the, the distance in our ordinance to an intersection, I think this is actually probably three times that distance. I've been here five years, and I've never seen the mayor. If, I think, I think 2% is the saying, and I've never seen it over 1%. He, he's never, ever sat in a room with us. We cut and cut and cut until it's under 1%. So I can't imagine that answer being anything other than that. We hope it, it not only self-sustains, but it regenerates, you know, so that it's, not only, we want it to be well-maintained, we want it to be a jewel. Our DPW director is actually in, in the audience, and, you know, him and our director of Parks and Recreation, they're already coming up with a plan for year one on, you know, what's the personnel that's required to maintain it, you know, what's the plan going forward, you know, how can we make it safe, you know. In every one of our steering committee meetings, our captains from our police department rotate into those steering committee meetings, because, you know, it's safety, it's maintenance, it's, you know. I think what, what the mayor and what administration and what our council, council is looking to do is to provide something for, you know, all our residents within town. We certainly have gotten the checkmark on all our ballfields and, and stuff like that, but we're looking for something maybe a little bit more passive. You know, a lot of, you know, the educational features on the property, when Mike had mentioned the signage, is, you know, Ruben was telling me before, our architects, about, you know, the history and, and the makeup of the farmhouse, and stuff I would never even known, you know. How, how great would it be for our young kids to not only take a class trip somewhere, but to take it right here to this farm and kind of get a history on this town? You know, the place where they live. So, there's a lot of great advantages. You know, I know that a lot of you live either behind it, or in the area, or on the side of it, and it's hard to see something that was sort of dormant for a long time, you know, be recreated. But, you know, there's a lot of thoughts, a lot of the activities are away from sort of, you know, the backdrop of it. We will, township, yep. That conservation management agreement that we entered with the county in April of 2017, that basically gives us the rights. What the county was doing was helping us, because a developer was coming in, and he had an approval, he was actually maintaining the buildings. But he did have an approval for multifamily, and I don't remember the number of units, and commercial on the site. And it was right up to the property lines. So, and that was, you know, it was, it was very high density. And the administration at that time didn't, didn't want that to happen. So, you know, Mayor Henry is now carrying the torch and saying, okay, we're trying to implement that vision. It has to be like five... It has to be like five years at least, you know, it's pretty pricey. You know, sanitary lines have to be brought in, electrical, you know, conduit to light, you know. It's basically, you know, without the lights, it's dawn to dusk. We don't see it going on, you know, beyond, you know, eight PM, you know, in the winter months. Usually, in the summer, you're still light at eight PM, so. Well, it was a suggestion made by our shade tree, one of our shade tree members and our conservation officer. And it was something that, you know, he saw in several parks, and he had suggested himself. It could be for anybody, you know, it's a memorial of, you know, let's say your dad, or a fallen hero, or an officer who was shot in the line of duty. It could be whoever, I mean, I would just think that the pre-qualification, Gary, would be a resident from town, right?
Yeah, the original intent for a memorial park was three things, first responder, military, and then the residents. And it would be areas in the future designated for those memorial trees, which would be marked with a plaque, and also a possible brick that was mentioned before, designated where the tree was. The town of Garden Memorial Garden is a pretty large area. So, we can accommodate those three themes.
And it's actually in an open area of the park where there's no, there's really no vegetation there. It's actually, the old farm road goes between it. And the idea was, by our landscape architects, is to keep that roadway there, or just the roadway bed to have people be able to, like, walk through that and have that incorporated into the pathway of the park. Well, just remember that this green, this dark green shaded, is a thick layer of wooded. Let me ask you, and I can't remember, in Olbridge Muse, what type of lighting do you have on the street? Is it Cobra Head, or is it sort of like a decorative? Decorative street post. Oh, Town and Country. I know, but the lights, first of all, you're not going to see a subway sign, but the lights that you're going to see are going to be similar to what you see on your street, except instead of it being ten to fifteen feet in front of your house, it's going to be something like, you know, are there homes that face this back? Okay, so it's going to be something like, let me think, thirty, 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 at the closest, about a hundred feet. No, it's probably to the top of the, top of the peak of the decorative post is like maybe fourteen feet. It's a similar size as your street lighting. It's exactly what would be out on Cottrell when you, when you come out tonight. Just look to your right when you come out on Cottrell, before you make the left to get back to Olbridge Muse, you'll see them lined up. See, you can see the intensity of them as well. They are LED, yeah. We don't, because it's a conceptual plan. Mike, can you throw out some dimensions on it before? Well, not even that, but I could, what I could do is I could repost this online, and we could pull a couple of dimensions so you could see it. You know, this way, so we could, we could have some dimensions back here from the roadway to the pathways themselves at the shortest distance. And we could have the dimensions here to the shortest distance along the edge line. And I think one of the questions before is on the east side, were we going to touch any of the vegetation? And no, these trees are representative of the existing apple orchards. This dark, heavy green line is existing vegetation. Yeah, please. Oh, sure.
Good evening, all, and Nicole and councilwoman here that are here this evening. My name is John Hauser. I have very deep roots in this town. My family's been here for a hundred and fifty years. The Cottrell family's been here longer than that. I've been taking care of the orchard, the buildings and the grounds for the past thirty years. So, the maintenance that you have seen there has been completed by me. When it was, before it got preserved there, I worked with the builder that was also wanted to keep the farmland assessment up. So, I worked with him for the few years while the transition was going on. And that's when previous mayor, Jim Phillips, got involved and didn't want to see it developed and pursued the preservation of it, which was very, I was very happy about. And I wouldn't be able to live with myself if I didn't come up here and present to the public what I see is a real gem that we have here. This is a great piece of history, it's probably the oldest, and I know it is, the oldest working farm in the township. The buildings are the oldest in the town, okay? When he talked about the architect, about the building being eighteen sixties, that's when the fire occurred, when the house burnt down, that was the rebuild. The original house is over a hundred years older than that. Yes, right, so it goes back over two hundred and fifty years old. I don't know why we would want to reinvent something, you know, we have a treasure, we have a gem right here. I would like to see it continued in what it is. It presents and holds a lot for the town. And I would like to just point out to you a few of the activities that I did when I was allowed to on the grounds there. I'd like to pass these around. These were done by students here in Olbridge. We had, I came up with a program, we brought fifth graders in, and they started from scratch. We came in September, the beginning of school year. I provided the busing, the materials and the training. And these kids came and planted seeds, right from the beginning there. We planted out in the field, we raised crops, and our goal was to supply the food bank here in town. We did this for two years in a row until I was asked to stop. So, if you would just like to take a look, the school, the schools are the ones that put these pictures together and these books together for me to share and keep as a record. So, what we did is, as the kids, we planted this crop, they took care of them. They came every Friday, we brought them out for two hours. And the school actually got a national character award for that. Teachers and students went to Washington D.C. and were received by Michelle Obama and got their award, okay? So, it was an outstanding program, recognized in Washington there. I would like to see that continue there. As they planted and grew the crop, our goal was to supply fresh stuff, not only to them, but to the food bank, okay? So, we have two groups here that we're trying to serve here in town, our children and the needy. And we visited the food bank as we were producing this crop. When we got to the end, when we got to Thanksgiving, we were able to harvest, you'll see the crop there, some fifteen boxes, over a thousand pounds of product and produce there, that they were able to take back to the school and make their salads for lunch and stuff like that. But they also got that community service connection, okay, to serve and help our needy here in town. So, that kind of program, I think, is very passive, very little impact on the town here, and could be accomplished and continued without tearing the property up, for no other better word. I wish I was involved in the steering committee, I wasn't invited, you know. I do think that, you know, I could have had a different plan. Yes, this is much more conservative, but I wanted to let you know that there is a way to serve the public there. I do believe that if the apple orchard was continued, I did have a ten-year lease when the county took over the property, when it was preserved with them. For the first time ever in the county, they allowed it fruit tree protection to continue because it has a history of fruit tree production. And that's why they, but you need a long-term lease. When they talked about the young trees, the saplings put in there, I planted some three hundred new trees because the orchard right now is not viable. I've been taking care of it all these years, but at a loss. There's too much space between the trees, the type of tree is old and it's tall and stuff like that. But I wanted it to continue, and I knew if I saved it, maybe there would be an opportunity in the future. And when I made that agreement with the county, I thought, okay, we're going to be able to have an orchard out here and forever. The plan that the county and I came up with was that, to serve the public, it would become a pick-your-own orchard. It wouldn't be for free, they would have to pay for the apples, but all fall long, it would be open. We would have a place right here in town for all the residents to come, enjoy the orchard, spend the afternoon there and stuff, and be able to pick apples there. Well, there's a lot of heirloom apples in there that I kept, the original trees, and I planted new ones in there. So, you have varieties that maybe you've never heard of, Opalescent is one. I actually took budwood from those trees, and with the new saplings that I planted in there, there are many of the same varieties that were there before. I increased them to fill in those rows. So, there's Opalescents, there's another variety called Jersey Red that's in there. There's another variety that, before Wine Sap came along, there was a Stamen. Some of these varieties, and there's Orleanes in there, is another variety. They're heirlooms, they're over a hundred years old, they're stuff that my grandfather and great-grandfather planted. Yes, oh yes, some of those varieties are, and then some of the new trees that I planted there are the newer varieties, even Honeycrisp are in there right now, okay? So, the goal was to try to have a long season, because some of those apples were always late fall apples there and stuff. So, I put stuff in that would start in August, and September, and October, and November. So, we would have a long pick-your-own season there, that was the goal there. The original thought about the buildings was, and that goes back to our planner before, Sam Rizzo, who's been, was employed here for, I think he worked thirty-eight or almost forty years here in town, our planner. And he came up with concept plans with the county there, and they thought that the barn, the big barn that they thought that could be a farmer's market, that either could be run by myself, who was the grounds there, or the town could have a community farmer's market. I think the community gardens is a good fit for that property there. Squeezing these other things in, a splash park. If you think about it, I thought about that a little bit, you know what? Maybe the kids do need someplace to play or whatever. But if you were to locate that over at the YMCA, you already have some infrastructure there, you have the parking, and you have the facilities. And you could share that with the YMCA, okay, the cost and the management and everything else like that. It would be much easier on the taxpayers, and maybe it would be a better fit over there and stuff. The house, crazy idea, but it's what I kind of enjoy. When I go on vacation or something like that, is a bed and breakfast, you know. The people that take care of those houses for a bed and breakfast, they are pristine. I mean, so, you know, if you were to manage it or something like that, it wouldn't need much done to it all. Yes, it would have to be, you know, whatever requirements would be done for upgrades or something for electrical or whatever. But it was a beautiful house, like you pointed out there, Mr. Cottrell kept it very well. He invested into it there and stuff like that, so it wouldn't take a lot to get that into operation there. The other building that they call for storage and thing, was actually, it was. Originally, it was a summer kitchen, before they had air conditioning and stuff like that. You wouldn't want to cook in the main house because the heat would get too hot and stuff like that. And if you could just think, a hundred years ago, when you did have help, there was no convenience stores or anything like that, so that kitchen was used to make meals for the help, too, when they came in there. So, the summer kitchen served a couple purchases, you know, during the summer, to get the heat out of the kitchen, and then move it out there, and then take care of the help. The next building over was, they call it a stone building like that, that goes back, that's one of the original buildings on the property. If you look at it, that farm were designed to be like a compound almost. The buildings had to be close enough that they were easy to walk to. There wasn't lights, there wasn't electricity. Wintertime was a challenge, take care of animals, you didn't want to have to shovel a lot of snow. There wasn't, you know, ways to even push it back then and stuff. So, they put the buildings pretty close to one another. That building was originally used for the carriage house. There was no cars, all the horse equipment, right, that stone building there, was the carriage house. So, that was used to keep the carriage for the work carriages and also the social carriages that they used to drive around with. I think that could be used, I talked to the Olbridge Historical Society. They have an overflow of farm stuff and other displaced stuff down there. They would like to be able to, or would, set up that building with historical things. Another thing that would attract, when the kids did come, they want to talk about the history or something of the town or something like that. It could be there without a lot of problems to renovate it, to get it going there. I think that they're trying to squeeze so much activity and stuff into there, and it's duplicate of stuff that we already have all around town. You know, a walking trail, there's a walking trail that exists right around this municipal complex when they built it. Probably nobody knows about it because it's pretty much all grown over, there was exercise spots and stuff like that. Is there a real need for that? Is there, you know, if nobody's using this one that's on this side of the road, what makes them think they'll use one over there, you know? I just question some of their thoughts, what they're thinking there. I do believe that we could save the township. I think they put two million dollars away already as capital budget to start the initial, just evaluations and studies on the property. We're talking with the mayor, Mr. Shaw. Another number he threw out there was an additional two or three million dollars to do some of these renovations and stuff like that. My proposal, it wouldn't cost the town a penny, you could save five million dollars right off the bat without investing anything there. And you could put the whole property into income-producing. Rent it out to myself or any other farmer, put it out to bid, whatever you want. The buildings could be utilized, and it still could be used by the public and greatly benefit our children in town here. Just a little fact that I always, I talk to a lot of times at schools, and in the turn of the century, at nineteen hundreds, here when we're here, ninety-eight percent of our population was involved in agriculture, either in the production, the supplies, or the need of materials and stuff like that. When we hit the year two thousand, which is already eighteen years old there, less than two percent of our entire population are now involved in agriculture. Nobody knows what's going on out there at the farm. These kids, when they came and we did this project, they learned skills, sustainability, they know how to grow a crop, and they were so thrilled that the teachers were able to use this as a little tool to give them an incentive, you know what, if you don't behave and you don't get your work done, you're not going out there to the farm and stuff like that. It really thrilled me to work with them there, and I think that this property and stuff like that, there's no rush to do this. You know what, give it five years, ten years, or whatever, it'll still be there. If they do this project, you can't go backwards.
Mr. Hauser.
And then I could tell you that, right now, with this design and that walking trail, I can't take care of the orchard any longer. Will they be able to do it? I doubt it, you know, so I would have to abandon that, you know, responsibility.
Thank you. Well, we would have, I don't make that determination, I think administration does. If you're asking if Mr. Hauser would be maintaining it, I wouldn't know that answer. Well, the intention is to maintain it. We would get a professional to maintain it, we would have our DPW staff maintain it, or our Parks and Rec Department would maintain it. And if they need to be trained in doing that, they will be. They were great suggestions that Mr. Hauser had. Yeah, sure. The intention is to preserve the apple orchards that are out there. And certainly, you know, a lot of, you know, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Hauser was saying, you know, our community groups can go out there with our community gardens. I know that a lot of the conversation that we had internally was, a lot of things could be used, you know, for the food bank, and, you know, have our, you know, silver linings group go out there and maintain as well. So, there was a lot of talk, but, I mean, there was, it's a little bit too early on to sort of pinpoint exactly what would go on. Does anybody else have any questions, councilwoman? Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, if not, again, you could still send me an email with your written questions, if you think of anything else, to nshapiro@olbridge.com. Once I have, this presentation would probably go up, you know, early next week, online, on that project page. And then, once I have the minutes, that'll take probably about a couple- And then once I have the minutes, that'll take probably about a couple of weeks. I'm going to wait until I compile all the questions, so after the ninth, to get those minutes up. But, anything that you want to know, any updates, will go on there. As a follow-up, what I owe you is the intersection improvements by the county that I'm going to pass on to you once I get that confirmed.
Just one last point too, just to add this idea about the spray park. I actually thought that would be a good idea also to get out to the YMCA.
The idea was, the idea was it's at a smaller scale and it's for some, it's centrally located so that, you know, some people don't like to travel down to the YMCA. So, we were trying to have something a little bit more centrally located. And the idea is if, you know, there is available grant money out there through the county, through the state for Parks and Recreation, that would involve, you know, splash pads and playgrounds. So, it wasn't like, you know, it was just thrown on there. It was just some sort of amenity for, you know, this, you know, central location. Small, I don't remember. Yes, the, we didn't have the sample yet for that, but if you look closely at the playgrounds... Oh, no, no, no. It was, that exact sample was used. We're not looking for it to be sort of, and if you look on our website, you could see the early on presentation to the steering committee where I was trying to give examples of something that's, you know, one of those big splash parks which are very colorful or something as passive as, you know, sort of fountains that come out of the ground, that's sort of like rhythmic, you know? Nothing extravagant, nothing too colorful, but we're trying to pick something that comes into the theme of the farm. If you see, I don't know if you could see that, is it to, that playground, that's sort of a red barn in the lower right-hand corner? Do you see that up there, that farm-themed playground? That's the extent of what we were looking at as far as the playgrounds, something that's in a farm theme. There were other examples in the first steering committee presentation, I just picked this one. So, there's certainly different types of themes that we could, you know, as the project progresses, check out the project page and you'll get up-to-date information on that page, okay? Right, 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 right. Thank you. Thank you all for coming and if you didn't sign in, please sign in. And if you didn't provide me your email address, you probably won't get it.